Okay, let's call the meeting to order. And everyone who's here from the board, except one of our students. We excuse people with mic. Except for Cheryl. So, we're gonna begin with communication items.
All right, we'll take it away. We have a robust agenda today, so we'll just kick it off. And with Cassie, if you wouldn't mind coming up and sharing what's happening at the elementary, that would be wonderful. What should I choose?
The hot one.
Good evening and happy October. It's exciting and also hard to believe that we are almost middle October already. So tonight, I'm gonna give some October highlights and look ahead into November. First off, we sent off our fundraiser orders today. They are officially in the mail, ready for Cherrydale to receive. There's a lot of time and planning and organizing that goes into that. And I want to give a shout out to our admin assistant, Amy Spanier, for really taking that on and organizing and making sure everything is accounted for and sent off. In addition to that, I want to say a huge thank you to our students and families for supporting our Painesville Elementary fundraiser. It is our biggest fundraiser of the year. And we have surpassed last year's, and I don't know prior to that, but we've had a very nice turnout. And I'll provide that information further in detail at a later date after Cherrydale gets all the orders and things back to us. But big thank you to students and families for supporting our students. Product pickup date will be announced and set soon. Once Cherrydale receives our orders, then they get back to us with that product pickup time. And that's all held at the elementary school. Homecoming days, we are participating in our dress-up days this week. And the energy is filling the hallways at school. And it's been fun to see students participate in that. We have our homecoming parade. We always look forward to the high school students that come over. And we line up our hallways on Friday, and they walk through. And we cheer and listen to the band and get to see everybody that comes over. So we're looking forward to that on Friday. Wanted to give a late start recap. Being that those are new to our schedule, I think it's important for you, the board, but also the public to know how you're utilizing that time. And it's such a critical time for us as staff to come together to have that professional development opportunity. And so our paraprofessionals throughout the district met with Superintendent Bullard for some professional development related to categorical disabilities, really understanding the varying disabilities that they may work with, with our students, and just having that time to learn together and to be learners with Superintendent Bullard leading that. So thank you, Janelle, for your leadership there and having that time with our paraprofessionals. Our certified staff in both buildings spent some time analyzing student data. And so you're gonna see some of that later tonight. But that's how we used our time at the elementary specifically, looking at MCA data, FastBridge data, setting grade level achievement goals. So when students come to us in the fall, we see where they're coming in academically, math and reading. And so together, we set some goals for our teams and some action steps that we'll continue to have those conversations at our grade level meetings each month. So that was a great use of time. And I want to just reiterate how precious that time is for us to come together as learners. You've heard Principal David talk about PBIS at the secondary and just reminding that we have PBIS at the elementary and really promoting that positive behavior. And so one thing new this year is we are recognizing students each month for being mindful, connected, and respectful. And so today was our first opportunity to recognize students throughout the elementary school, kindergarten through fifth grade. And so the names are listed, but I do want to read them out loud and give them the recognition that they deserve. So starting off with Natalie Payne, Jackson Angremson, Nellie Linecker, Sawyer Moore, Rowan Hellerman, Harper Wensman, Sawyer Rondo, Ava Berry, Lily Campson, Miles Marcus, Easton Byer, Addison Hamish, Paisley Hellerman, Grana Shaffer, Michael Herrera, Denarius England, Macy Barton, Easton Hamish, and Grace Simon. Those were the recipients for September's Bulldog Spotlight for the elementary school. Looking ahead, as I mentioned, we've got some homecoming activities. We have our picture retake day. That was a reschedule or a different date that was identified originally. So our preschoolers could be part of that. So that is October 17th, next week. We have preschool screening coming up on the 18th. And just a reminder to families that there's no school on the 19th or 20th of next week. And then looking ahead to fall conferences already. Those are right around the corner. An opportunity for us to connect with families on November 9th and 10th. And I know that looks a little bit different this year in our calendar, but we'll get that communication out to families with those details. Included pajama day, no better day than to receive a Bulldog Spotlight certificate. So they were very excited, so wanted to share that with you tonight.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Or anything about this.
All right, thank you. All right. And we'll invite up our secondary principal, David. Can you come on up and let us know what's happening at the secondary?
All right, good evening. Happy World Mental Health Day today, October 17th. Just a few things going on with us. I want to congratulate King and Queen Josiah Uch and Emma Flanders. The high school homecoming dance and coronation were held over the weekend. And Mrs. Whaler wanted to let me know that, let you know, that it was a huge success. And attendance was, it was well-attended this year compared to years past. So congratulations to Kelly and Jackie for putting that on and doing a great job with it. On Thursday, for our homecoming activities, we have our Ironman volleyball and powder puff football, beginning at 2:00. Weather permitting with the powder puff. Friday, like Cassie had mentioned, we have some high school students that are going over to the elementary. They will also be going to Corona's Care Center and Corona's Place. And that will be the homecoming royalty, pep band, the senior athletes, champ and lady, and student council representative. So it'll be a big crowd going to three different places. We have our pep fest at 2:20 on Friday. Our middle school homecoming dance after school. Our tailgating event begins at 5:30. And football game at 7:00. And with the tailgating event, we know that the weather is great. So we will have a plan to continue to host that. And we're looking at having a majority of it in the auto shop. So I'm working with Mr. Gunther to get that cleaned out and ready to go. Next Wednesday, October 18th, is Middle School Break Day. And that's put on by the Middle School Student Council. And they're actually, it's always been in the morning, but they're trying to decide right now if they want to do it in the morning or in the afternoon. I think the morning poses some troubles when it's wet out and a little chilly for some of those kids. We all know that. Middle school kids don't always dress appropriately and with jackets and things when the weather chills. So I just want to talk a little bit about some of the questions that were raised at the board meeting. And just kind of give you an outline on some of the things that we have going on here. And then as we jump into the data part of it, we'll also elaborate on some things on where we are. So we had a question from a board member about second chance breakfast and bulldog time. And so what we have done this year with the block schedule is after first block, the last four years, we've had second chance breakfast. This year, we added about 13 minutes to that second chance breakfast and incorporated our bulldog time. So during that time, students have the opportunity to go to the cafeteria and get a snack. Champ's Cafe, which is extremely busy during that time. The line is usually out the door and around the hall. We have some of our groups that have started having their activities meetings there, middle school, high school, student council, for example, and our staff. So there was a question about supervision and accountability and things like that. I just want to address that. So all of our teachers are available in a couple of different ways during this time. Teachers are available for students that need to catch up on work, that need extra practice or instruction, failing or poor grades. We just had our midterm grades come out. Teachers are encouraged to schedule their students who are failing classes to come in during that time. They've also been asked to email parents if the student is not coming during that time. So we want to make sure that that is available to them. Work on a project. We have students that are in the Innovation Center during that time. We have students that are in the auto shop. We have students that are in the wood shop. Teachers who are not meeting with students on a particular day are outside of their classroom. They're out either standing by their door, in the hallway, helping to supervise the cafeteria and helping to supervise the gym. We don't use the pack during that time because if they went down there, there's no way to get back in. So we do have some middle school students that like to go into the gym and play football and shoot baskets and things for a few minutes. Paraprofessionals are available at that time. They work with special ed students, and they are also out and about helping to supervise the hallways. Administration, myself and Mr. Rasmussen. You know, when we're available, we try to be out there every day. We're checking classrooms. We're looking to see what our students are up to. Our school resource officer is visible in the cafeteria and walking the halls when either Tony or Chris are available in the building. Our social worker is using this time to meet with small groups of students so that it helps to alleviate the students that leave during class time. Today, for example, our National Honor Society held a small activities fair for eighth graders in the gym during bulldog time. There, they highlighted activities like band and some other activities that they can be involved in when they're in ninth grade. And that's an NHS project that they started last year. And also today during bulldog time, our seniors did their annual toga march around the building. You may have seen that on social media. This is a time, so when we came back from COVID, you know, there's a lot of talk about learning loss. And there is a lot of debate about learning loss. But one thing is for sure, and one thing that you will find when you research COVID, is that student absenteeism has increased. Staff absenteeism has increased. Students and staff requiring mental health services has increased. Now more than ever, it is important for us to connect with our students. Is bulldog time a time where all of our students are doing academic things? No. Is it a time, is it a time where, you know, some students aren't using their time wisely? Yeah, that is true. There are middle school students and high school students with young minds and need a reminder and a push to make sure that they're using that time wisely for academics or any enrichment, like working on activities or socializing with their friends. Is it a good time for some students to unwind and socialize? Absolutely. And with COVID, it has become, it's just the importance of having some time to just be student or just be kids in school, whether it's for 10 minutes or 15 minutes, is more important than I can stress to you. Our students are responsible. Our staff is responsible. We are working to make connections with students. Students are going into, what you'll find is a lot of students will go into their second block class, hang out with the teacher on a basis where maybe it's not academic. They'll go in there with their friends and hang out. And they may play some video games for a few minutes. But it's an opportunity for us to socialize. And we don't want to be a school that you arrive at 8:20 and you leave at 3:10, and you have these classes, and it's regimented, and students aren't able to express and be themselves. That is the purpose of bulldog time. Like anything that we do, we monitor and we adjust. There are things that we can do better. We're working on, you know, we have dialogue about creating some study groups or being more, having, there are some schools that will have a document, for example. They sign students up that day. Those students are required to go to those classes for extra help during that time. So there are things that we can adjust. But I cannot stress the importance of socialization and students feeling welcome and creating those connections that will get them through the school day, the school year, and, you know, through life. And those are some of the things that we want to teach our kids. We are not the only school that uses a time such as this. There are many schools that do. There are schools that call it brain power. There are schools that call it flex time. There are schools that call it just second chance breakfast. So we haven't invented anything new, but we are just trying to create ways to connect with our students. Advisory time and resource time. So every Thursday, we have advisory. We have an advisory time. We call it advisory because that's what it's been all here since the school opened. But it's, we want to kind of get away from the advisory. And the resource time is every Thursday from 2:40 to 3:10. So we have an adjusted schedule. And that's an opportunity for teachers to connect, build relationships with the same group of kids for the entire year and in some cases, all four years of high school. During that time, we are encouraging teachers to work with students on checking grades, homework, missing assignments, team building with planned activities. And our middle school grades, grade six through eight, will be starting our SEL program through seven mindsets. And they'll be doing that twice a month on Thursdays. And then we are also planning two class activities per year for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade that will be used during that time as team building and skill building. And then the rest of the time will be designed for any group or planned activities or things that we have going on with school. For example, on this Thursday, we have our homecoming activities. We're doing those mostly during advisory time so that we are not interrupting. So all four classes will have about the same amount of class time. So a lot of things that go on. And I don't want to have a high school where we are having kids get in a line and go somewhere. We want them to have the opportunity to create and to have a little bit of responsibility and some freedom. With the block schedule and how it all came about. So I started at the high school in the fall of 2019. But the 2018, with our previous superintendent, the idea, you know, when that superintendent was hired, I believe, the, what drove us that direction was Mr. Bullard's ability to put students first and have a student-centered student learning, just flex time, just different things to bring in for our students. When they started looking at a different schedule, there was a committee. I believe it was like 10 to 13 teachers who were on that committee. It was a very thoughtful process. They looked at schedules from many different schools. And as a staff, decided that this was the direction that they wanted to go. They put a lot of time into that. They, my belief is that what, one of the driving forces with that was as a district, we made the commitment to our Innovation Center, which was just starting up. We made a commitment to CTE classes and auto shop classes. And a block schedule was providing that opportunity to lengthen class periods and give those classes an opportunity to be productive. Is the block schedule the best thing in the world? No. Is a seven-period day the best in the world? No. If you went to every school district our size within a 50-mile radius, you will find 50 different daily schedules. So what we want to do is we want to take the time this year, which we've started, and we want to be thoughtful in the process and evaluate an hourly schedule that we can set on that will fit the needs of our staffing, that will fit the needs of our students, that will provide opportunities for consistent core classes, that will provide opportunities for less conflicts with students who want to take honors classes, opportunities in band and choir. And we want to take all of those things and create an hourly system that will fit the needs of Painesville schools. Does that mean that we have a block schedule next year? Possibly, but there are many options that you can have. It was also brought up that middle school, that finding a middle school that has a block schedule is impossible. And so I just wanted to let you know, in our research and all the things that we've done in trying to, you know, look at what our schedule is gonna be next year. Middle schools our size with a block schedule include Holdingford, Royalton, Sock Center, Albany, and Byron Schools, which is a school that, when the district moved to the block schedule a few years ago, Byron Schools was one of the schools that they looked at because of their innovative scheduling and the way they conducted their schools. Is a block scheduled for periods? Yes, but it's also a five-period day. Many schools have a block, a five-period block schedule. And so anything, everything is on the table right now on what we're looking at. But the bottom line is, we want to find a schedule that fits the needs of our students and our staffing needs so that we are offering classes that we can offer and that we are not overtaxing our staff with overloads and conflicts with schedules. Last November, I put a survey together in my Bulldog update, and I sent it out two times. And each time that I sent, whenever I send my Bulldog update, I average about 300 to 350 visits to that. I don't know if they all read it, but at least they're opening it up. I sent the survey out two times last year. I had 35 responses. Of those, just some highlights of some of the questions as it pertains to middle school. One of the questions was, "Do you feel middle school classes are too long for most classes?" 48.6% said yes, 35 responses. "Do you feel that middle school classes are just right for most classes?" 31.4% said yes. 20% had no opinion. Another question, "If you would like the district to explore a different hourly schedule for the middle school." 36.4% said yes. 30.3% said no. 33.3% had no opinion. A few of the comments that were listed as with our current schedule. "My child is doing far better academically, having less courses to work on at one time." "Classes that involve group work or lab work have more time to complete experiments." "Keeping on top of four classes for an active student is very manageable and really lessens the stress load." Some of the negatives with the current schedule. "I don't like every other quarter for core classes." "Better for two quarters in a row." "Students not receiving core classes for an entire year." "This is not a good learning environment." "It is slightly too long, maybe 10 minutes shorter." "And they need reading and math every day." So when looking at some of those comments, I, in trying to create a schedule for this school year, looked at ways that we could have our middle school classes, middle school grades have their classes every other day for their core classes. The issue is when we don't have the eight classes, when we just have four and we have three sections, which is an odd number of sections, creating that is very difficult. The other issue that we have is our staff, a good majority of our staff teach middle school classes and high school classes. A staff member that is teaching a middle school class every other day cannot teach a high school class because every other day, they would have six classes. So there are some issues with that. So what I did is I looked at sixth grade first. And the reason I looked at sixth grade first is because those sixth grade teachers all teach middle school only. So that was a natural, that was a natural choice. We were able to get math and science every other day. Same teacher throughout the whole school year. And then we were able to get language arts every other day. And then each class needs a partner. And so a partner is the Innovation Center classes for sixth grade and also the computer lit classes, which are required for sixth grade students. I chose those classes because those teachers are flexible. Anita Flanders is in the Innovation Center, and she teaches the sixth grade classes, but then she also has the opportunity to manage the Innovation Center. Mr. Campbell teaches, he's doing everything at this point because of where we are with staffing. He is teaching our computer lit classes. He is doing our MTSS interventions with our students. He's filling in doing some FIED classes. And so he's busy, but he's flexible in how we can manage those classes. When you get to seventh grade, same thing. We had, then when we get there, we have less students that, or less teachers that only teach middle school. So we had to, I moved around. A teacher who normally would teach language arts, I switched grade levels. And we were able to figure it out so that we could get math and reading at the seventh grade level every other day. Our eighth grade classes, those core classes are taught by teachers who teach middle school and high school, which made it extremely difficult to incorporate that. That's where we are with that. I just wanted to make sure that I addressed some of those questions and explained some of those things I maybe rambled on a little bit. But do you have any questions for me in regards to anything that I said tonight?
A couple.
Yes.
The bulldog time, you said you added 13 minutes. What is total time now for bulldog time?
It's 25 minutes, and then there's a bell, and then it's five minutes to get to class.
And second breakfast percentage-wise, like half the kids participate, or?
No.
No.
So second chance breakfast is a cash-only breakfast.
Right.
So there's snacks. Today, they had a lot of pizza, breakfast pizza left over, so they were selling that. But what we're encouraging our students to do is to eat first breakfast because that is a free breakfast.
Right.
So we do have less people that are eating second chance breakfast. We also have more people that are, more students that are using champs during that time.
I'm just wondering if second chance... I'm just wondering if second ch- second chance breakfast, is that worth doing? I mean, I'm just, no, you don't have to. I'm just throwing it out there.
I guess the, the question would, the answer would be is, how many students do you need before it's worth running? I have thought about having, having breakfast after first block. And see, you know, play with that a little bit, but our numbers for breakfast in the morning are, have been really good. We're really encouraging families to take advantage of the, the free breakfast.
Okay. No thought of doing supper at two?
Well, I would, I, if, when my son was here, yeah, he would have preferred that because he ate two lunches every day.
Where does, I guess my question is, it's the money for that Champs, where, where does that money go to?
That's all part of our, our marketing and entrepreneurship class. A lot of it goes back into the business. They do have a, they do have a fund balance and I don't, I'm not.
So what is that called?
Champs Cafe.
No, 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 no. Who handles that money?
Elise Hagan is our, she runs the, she's a teacher. She runs the Champs Cafe and the entrepreneur classes and the marketing classes that, that make like our Bulldog clothing order. That's all part of.
That's up dollars up. I mean, that's, trust me, my kids spend a lot of money on that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's gotta be.
I can, I can certainly get you the information.
That's gotta be pretty lucrative. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there's some, there's some costs that in equipment and, and, you know, I know that they have to. The department, the Sterns Colony has told us they needed to update their refrigerator to a commercial one. And so that's a pretty hefty price and that'll, they're self sustaining. There, there is a fund balance. I can certainly check with Carrie about that and get that to you.
I guess I, I want to thank you Dave for just clarifying. I guess, you know, and I had asked some questions. I guess where I'm coming from and I got some emails and calls from other parents, but I guess. I totally understand. I like the block scheduling. I like that you're open and I know you're open. I've talked to you one-on-one that you're looking at tweaking things. And, and that's all I kind of am asking for is to tweak it. I put myself, and I don't want to use my own kid, but if you have a, a seventh, sixth, seventh or eighth grader, the maturity is a lot less than a junior or senior. And I'm picking on my kid. Well, do I go ask for help or do I read a book or do I go on my phone or, you know, so it's like, and I know the days of grabbing somebody in the ear because trust me, my ears were grabbed when I was younger. Can't do that anymore. But just the structure of saying, hey, we need to do this. And, and I don't envy, I, all the teachers, I, I totally applaud, but I, I just want to say thank you for, for what you do and. Yeah, we gotta do some tweaking, I guess so.
Well, yes, there are times that we also need to, as, as teachers, schedule those kids to come in when they need to. And there is a balance. And what we're trying to do is, is find that balance with our, with our students. And the younger, you know, twelve, thirteen year olds. Yes, it, it can be difficult to get them in, but they're at the point where, you know, if they're in activities, they need to maintain certain grades and we're trying to just give them a responsibility also, but we understand that there are times that we need to, you know, give them a little push in, into what they need to do. Not every day, but there are, there are times and, and we, we will look at, you know, it's a great time to do things, you know, if we, if we want to have a speaker in or if we want to do something that can be done in small groups for, for a short period of time on numerous days in a row. Certainly open to that.
Cause I, the struggles that I, and I'm sure everybody has their own struggles, but it's just a matter of little chores, taking the garbage cans out to the end of the driveway, bringing them back in. I got out of the comp and come here. And I'm almost willing to bet you a hundred dollars it won't be done, but it will be done before you go to school tomorrow. But I, I guess what I, what I'm just trying to say is, is I, I worry about that age group and the fact that they're going to push it off to the side because now I see jobs out there now where they give attendance bonuses. I used, Wise Man once told me, takes a good man to, to get a job. Anybody can get a job. Takes a good person to keep one. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you very much.
Questions, if you come from manufacturer background, Dave. Have, have you looked at or have you heard of using some type of process? So what I'm, what I'm thinking of is, because we use a lot of manufacturing. We had a process that we were trying to, I think it's get a grasp on and, and change in that process. So there's, there's things out there as far as like ties on events or lean events. Have you looked at doing, bringing in a professional to help you with understanding that and, and walking that process with, with the teachers?
I've heard of that, but we have not, we have not done that.
All right.
I would be interested. If you want to email me and can talk about it.
Sure, absolutely David. I don't have a problem with that.
That's the other, before I finish up, I, I really want to encourage you, if you have a question or a concern, please email me, come in and see me. If you want to schedule a time to come in and, and hang out for a couple hours and see how things operate, absolutely. Just let me know and we can, we can schedule a time and, and get you in here.
Okay, I'd just like to make a comment. When we started the block schedule, we were working, well, just like you said, on the CTEs and we had some other things. The cafe down there, in my mind, is CTE. We're trying to develop entrepreneurship. So we have had a lot of things going. I had no way as a board member at that time expected it ever to stay exactly the same. Life just changes. Society changes. Students are going to change. And my hope would someday be that maybe people look at the options of having a regular scheduled date or they have a block scheduled date, but we end up with a customized hybrid pencil schedule. It's who I'm saying that it doesn't have to follow anything specific, but you people are in it. You are here every day. I sit here as a board member, coming a couple times here and there, reading what I can. Janelle's always sending us information, but you are right here. And if we customize it for our own students, it's always going to get better. But I would hope, even with this gray hair, that it doesn't stop there. The worst thing that's ever happened anywhere is that's not the way it's always been done. That's not the way it's always been done. That has hampered business and everything else in this world forever. Absolutely. I think you're doing a great job. Just, I appreciate the explanation.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
Kind of awesome, everything we've been talking about. What's Iron Man volleyball?
Well, males, the, our senior males and junior males playing volleyball against each other.
Okay, thank you.
It's not Chris.
Thank you, David. Appreciate you.
Our activities director is actually out supervising volleyball right now. So I have his update and that is, I will work on that as well. But I have to read it from my computer because I know that my, oh, I can probably read it from there. I'm not going to read it verbatim either. Everybody can read this, but his, just wanted to recognize again, it is homecoming week. There are sixteen home games and, and a junior high conference volleyball tournament on Saturday in the pack. Since we did not have a home cross country meet this week, we're going to announce the seventh through twelfth grade runners during tonight's volleyball match so they can be recognized for the season accomplishments as well. Education Minnesota break is coming up and with that means it's kind of the end of the regular fall sports season. So we look forward to watching our students compete through the rest of the season and hopefully into the postseason. The activity calendars are all updated on, online and social media for postseason updates. So keep an eye on that. Winter schedules are online and accurate to the best of his knowledge. You know, sometimes things change and we, we get them updated as quickly as possible, but currently they are up to date. So you can look at those, families can look at that to plan vacations and the such. For students that have not been in a fall activity, just a reminder that they should make sure that their physicals are up to date and their high school league forms and fees are paid for. Fees can be paid for at the, on Infinite Campus or at the high school office. We continue to look for officials, score table workers, announcers and trainers for games. I bet anyone's interested in helping or knows someone who might be, just get in talk with, in touch with Rick. Lastly, just he's giving a shout out to Winston Carlson and Brendan Hess. They are his student activity interns. Lot of stocking of concession stands and making sure that things are all ready to go. Just he's, they do really whatever needs to be done. Yesterday they even welded a pole for the chain game so that the, that broke the week before. So just a shout out and a thanks to them. So any questions or, or comments, you certainly can email Rick. And I'm sure he'd be happy to get back in touch with you. Next on our agenda is our community ed director. So Chris, come on up.
Hi, so we also, it's October, we still, we'll just do a pack report here. We have, still have a strong pickleball showing right now, but with the weather changing, they're starting to flash out. So, but that means our open gym times will start to get busier. And so we're preparing for that. We hired a couple of building attendants and we'll be training them, getting that ready for, for the winter season. We're working on creating a maintenance log for all the pieces of equipment in the, in the fitness center so that we can track, obviously when they've been maintained or fixed or had service. But to also figure out or start tracking when we need to retire some of them and, and to plan ahead if purchasing of equipment needs to happen. So we're working on putting just a big fitness log of, of all the pieces of equipment that is in the pack area at this point. And then I'm also looking at our current facility procedures with Elio and we'll be launching that facility portion. It might be good timing to take a look at our procedures and take a look at the groups that use our spaces, whether they're internal or external and see if those policies still match or if we need to do any tweaking of those, those procedures. So those are a couple of things that we're looking at through facilities. Events that are coming up, there's a tournament Saturday. We have a Peace Center tournament on the twenty-eighth. And then the Peace Center also has a basketball camp in November fourth. So those are some things that are coming up in our, in our pack building. For general community ed, we just had the early childhood fall family festival on October seventh at the elementary school. It was a great turnout. We had a lot of helpers. Big shout out to Amy Spanier, my early childhood staff, community ed staff. Boy Scout troop number thirty-four brought some people. NHS had a, had a bunch of kids that came and helped us. Magnify Financial sent some volunteers and, you know, we had help from our elementary staff by, they're made bars and cakes and the, the custodians were helpful and our kitchen staff were all very helpful to make this happen. We also had some community partners that donated products or their time. Joywave Coffee brought a whole system in. She had two slushy makers. Those got drained empty. They had to go get more stuff. So slushies were huge, a huge hit. Pizzas from Casey's, Quick Trip, Busy Mama, Shadys and Turtle Totem Massage. They all donated products and prizes for a bucket raffle. So the proceeds from this event help go towards that early childhood playground that I'll be working on. And we'll be having meetings and pulling, pulling a group back together to just see where we're at right now and to discuss what's going to happen in the future for future fundraising. The Arts Council has been actively raising money to improve. They want to add some cameras and improve the streaming system in the auditorium. They have secured money from community partners, from grants and then their own fundraising effort. So we'll be looking at really beefing up the streaming capability in that, in that auditorium. So more to come on that. We've hired a new admin assistant. So we're, I'm working, we're working on training. His name is Yorick Mueller. And we are very excited to have him on board and be ready to start goal setting and, and grow some more community education in the, in the community. And then of course we have a catalog coming up. So November first, all your information needs to be in because we'll be getting that catalog ready to go to the print. And then these are just, we have some on the horizon. I have some reports due in November, our state report. We have to renew our parent aware so that we can remain a four star program in our preschool and then our zero to four census. Any questions?
All right. All right. Okay, Jim, come on up and let us know what's happening technology wise.
All right, hello everyone. Thanks for having me again. Just to kind of recap, September, busy month, getting everything off the ground. Want to start just by thanking the faculty and staff of the Pinzillo County School for their patience and durability through everything. I know it's, it's always interesting getting the school year off the ground, but everyone's been doing amazingly and including the IT staff. So we're now up to full strength. They hired Jake Nelson, who's a new technology associate. So we have three full-time on staff, IT associates and integrationists. They were working hard over the month of September and closed over two hundred tickets. So keeping them busy. And that's not even everything they were doing. So again, they're doing wonderfully. Personally, started to look at the historical data from the previous tech levy with the conversation from the last board meeting to start compiling some information for you. And, you know, just a couple of items to note that kind of stood out to me where our annual subscription fees are right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And those are always growing. And all of the hardware within the next year, ten years will probably need to be replaced with a few exceptions. Some examples, there are eighty-seven access points. I checked the stats right before the board meeting. And even at six PM, there were eleven hundred devices on the network. So it is a, a well-used network here. But fifty-eight are end of life in 2027. The remainder will be end of life in 2030. And kind of the current average price of the access points are about nine hundred dollars per access point for replacement. Switches are a piece of hardware in the data closets. And it's where all of the physical connections are made, where you actually plug things in. And there are twenty-six of them in the area schools between the elementary and secondary school. And twenty-three of them are end of life even in 2024. And those, those prices are between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars per switch with the current system. So again, I'll be working with, you know, the administration to kind of put a higher perspective on, on what's happening as an overall picture. You've done a really wonderful job in the preparation and the planning so far. So it's, it's definitely a very well documented and run system. And lastly, we're feeling pretty good at TOTUS Tech, getting a grasp on kind of all of the different pieces. And getting an understanding of all of the, the variety of systems here. So. Thank you. And does anyone have any questions?
When you're talking about hardware that's end of life, does that mean that it's defunct all of a sudden, you know, it's just done?
software support patches, meaning they're open to vulnerabilities. So can you, it's not like, you know, will it just fall over and die? No. But you leave yourself open to unpatched software. So hackers and bad actors can exploit those things then. And like the company says, we're not going to fix that at that point. So that's what that means.
All right.
Thank you. I'll do one question next. On, on that hardware too, switches, what's the lifespan typical of your switches?
You know, a lot of ours were replaced in 2015 here, so they get nine years, 10 years. So sub right in there. Yep. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. And Ken, buildings and grounds, what do we have going on?
Good evening, guys. Since David used up all of our time, I'm going to try to keep it short. Tennis courts update, always talked to Ron today. I did miss the meeting and it, Chris goes to that for me. They did get the survey out, so I really appreciate if you guys would go on, it's on Facebook and stuff. I did not talk to my wife, but I haven't seen it. So she'll go on and do it for me. And so that's all. So please go on and find that and see if you can take that survey, get as many people on it as we can. And with that, a pile of rubble out there that I saw. I have talked to boss on that. I even told him that we had a late start for the parking lot being a little more empty on Tuesday. Didn't help. It's still there. We are on the list, he said. It'll be done by fall sometime here. So LED lighting in the elementary school, we are going to do that over MEA for the second half. So most of the, from Cassie's office to the east, we'll have new lighting with the exception of U bulbs. So any room that has a U bulb in it, we are not replacing it this time. That is a little different cost to them. I would like to kind of standardize the lighting if possible, so I'm kind of dragging my feet myself. Hopefully I can get an okay to standardize lighting in the elementary school. The emergency door at the stadium has been fixed. I had the two guys out together and they battled it out and hashed it out. There is some options we can do, you know, they kind of fight back and forth a little bit. That's why it was nice to have them both there. And they both have valid points, so it's kind of up to us how we want to manage that. The weather guy said that we should have it unlocked for four hours anytime that it happens and on to the door system and stuff. And the door guy was like, ooh, he didn't really like that idea and stuff. So I got a bunch of notes down there and we'll, I was going to present them to Mr. Bullard and see where we want to kind of go with that whole deal and the better ways or whatever. Track update dates. So after the football season here, we are going to start hauling some of that gravel from the tennis courts around and fill that lip. So that is still on project. It's getting colder, but we'll get a lot of that done yet. So the rubberized stuff that we were going to put in the cracks came in today. I did read it and that will not happen this fall unless it really warms up. So I need 48 hours above 55 degrees or something and to get that this time of year is pretty tough. So and then I've been working with the guys on roof repairs and I got a big packet from Carrie. I've been stumbling through that. Thank you, Carrie. So any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. All right. So that brings us to our capital levy discussion. So I did link in.
You missed B.
Oh, silly me. Were you guys like, yes? Yes? Sorry about that. Yes, please. All right. So we have a team here today. So Cassie and David are going to come on up and they'll invite, you guys come on up as well and you'll introduce each other. And I'm going to just turn it over to you and let you guys kind of walk through just some, every fall, we do a kind of a data update of academic performance, where things are at, what the information is that the teams are working from. And so I, I know David and Cassie and Marie and Maria have just spent quite a bit of time putting this together for, for multiple purposes, not just for tonight. And I think that's something that's really important that, that everybody kind of knows is that this isn't just a one-shot deal and done. They use this information and they're going to speak a little bit to how they use it. So I will, would you like me to present your, okay, slideshow? And then I'm going to present it. And Cassie, just let me know if, how you want me to click and I will try my best I can.
I'm going to try my best to present. So.
You can be comfortable.
A little bit. So really tonight is all about setting and laying the foundation for future conversations. As you know, World's Best Workforce comes up here in a month or so, and this is really going to kind of paint the picture. So when we start talking goals as a school and start setting those goals, we have this background knowledge going into that. So that's not a longer meeting then, and we're coming in with some background knowledge. So just really starting off with our mission here at Painsville Area Schools, and that is to prepare our students with the academic, social, and personal skills to succeed in their career and community. And as you heard tonight, right, like that, that's our why. We're getting our students ready for when they leave the Painsville Area Schools, not just academics, but the social piece and, and social skills. And so tonight, we're going to talk about some data and how, how do we as a system create the ins and outs and look at our wiring throughout our system? Sometimes our wires are crossed, sometimes there's shortages, sometimes they don't exist, right? And so we need to really look at, and we have looked at, the systems that we have in place. And what resources do we have available to us? When you look at this image, I should have added one more layer, and that layer would be federal, right? Because we get resources from the federal level, state, district level, and then we can look at our two sites, down to our classroom level and individual level. And that's where that magic happens, when we can reach our, our students down to that individual level. When we talk about resources across all of these areas, we're talking time, money, and people, right? And how do we allocate that so that we are effective, so that we are seeing progression and achievement in academic, personal skills, and social emotional learning? And so tonight, we're going to talk about, we've got Marie and Maria, they're going to talk about some of the, the systems that we have in place and look at the data that helps drive some of these decisions that we are, we are making throughout our district.
So part of our, part of our PLC process is to, is to look at these four key questions when, when we are identifying our needs and how that works within our, within our system. So the first one is what do we want our students to know and be able to do? And those, that can be academic standards, it can be social emotional skills. Do we want them to be critical thinkers? Do we want them to be productive citizens? It kind of encompasses a wide variety of things. But what do we want our students to be able to do? The second question is how will we know if our students know it? There's a lot of different ways, but assessments are, is a way, there are formative assessments, which are more low stakes, might be in the middle of the lesson, you know, asking students questions to check their understanding, thumbs up, thumbs down, just very casual. And it helps to just drive what maybe you're going to go to next. And then there's summative assessments, which will, which are usually, there's usually a grade, they're usually high stakes, and usually they, those would happen at the end of something. And the unit could be a midterm test, could be a final test for that, for that class. How will we respond when students don't know it? And that is, you know, reteach, remediate, and in the area that, that we'll touch on tonight is our MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. How are we going to do interventions for students and identify what those, what those interventions are? Some of those things can be tier one, where it's whole classroom, and some are a little more individualized. And then four, how will we respond when students know it? How will we extend our lessons? How will we enrich? How will we, how will we pose that next question, the higher level thinking for some of our students? And that, that's an area I think I always need to grow in, is how we're going to, how we're going to help the students that know what they're doing.
Do you remember the little white buttons and they would say, I love New York, right? And that's all it was, super simple. Well, that's my I love button. I love data. And when we met as a staff at the elementary, I, I showed the same slide. And yes, the white background is simple, but when we talk about data, we're talking about kids. And we always want to remember that, that we're talking about someone's child, right? And that's important. And so when we talk data tonight, remember we're talking about someone's kids, our kids, right? In addition to that, the other piece of data, we hope our kids come to school every day smiling, laughing, ready to learn. That's our hope and that's our want. That's not always our reality, right? Sometimes they just got in a fight with brother or sister, they're coming off the bus, we're ready to take them in, however, they're coming to us. They might be walking in on a day that we are going to give an assessment and I'm going to check your learning and check your understanding, but they're coming to us unregulated, not what this picture is showing, right? And so not only do we know that data represents our kids, but how they're coming to us. And I think that's important for us to remember. Also up on, on this, is one of my favorite visuals. So to the, to the left of that diamond, that's what you might have heard of RTI, response to intervention, really looking at, you've got your tier one, your core learning, right? And then we're going to provide resources to kids that aren't getting it, right? Or they're not meeting the standard, or they're not understanding. And what this does is this looks at all students. So we have everybody in tier one. If they don't get it, how can we provide support? If they do get it, how can we extend and enrich? So this is really looking at all kids across the board. And that's been a shift with MDE and looking at MTSS and, and how do we create a system that we can reach all kids? And so we'll be talking about, about that more here. When we look at data, and we did this at the elementary, what are the facts? What do we see? What do we notice, right? And what do we, what do we think the data is suggesting? What does this data mean? And what are we going to do with it? I think we met so many times because we have access to data like you would not believe. We could be here till nine o'clock talking data. But when we have to weed out what is most important for us to look at, right? And be able to have actionable steps for that data that we look at. Otherwise, we could have all the data in the world, but if we're not able to respond to it, why have it, right? And so that's what we'll be talking about tonight, just two types of data and how can we respond to that? What do we, what does that mean for the work that we do? So question two is how will we know when our students know it? When you think of assessment, what do you think of?
Test.
A test. But we know we can assess student learning in a variety of ways. Facebook, right? We just had the succulent boxes. That's evidence of learning, right? And so when our, when our teacher is working with students on building that succulent box, that's evidence and there's points to get up to that final project, right? That final product. And so those pieces, pieces of evidence along the way, oh, we haven't figured out how to use this tool, let me reteach the skill, right? Let me remediate, or let me show you another way how to use that tool in order to make that. So a shift in assessments, moving away from understanding what students know just through a paper pencil test. We need to shift to what does evidence of learning look like? And the best way to look at and find evidence of learning is through multiple ways, right? And as David alluded to, he, he talked about formative. But let's go back and look at these four. The first one is a screener. When you hear screener, what do you think of? This is me a little interactive here. What do you think of screener?
So it does a cursory check.
Yep. With your well child check, right? When we bring our kids in, we're just gonna, we're gonna check things over. I think of it as checking the oil, right? What's our oil level at? Okay? Well, we're going to check the inventory. Our screener at Painsville is Fastbridge Assessments. Fastbridge Learning is the, is the company that we, that we use. Diagnostic, okay, your oil level is low or that little engine light in your car comes on, what do you, what do you do?
Looking for the reason for it.
You're looking for the reason. You're getting down to that root cause. And so we, through MTSS, provide diagnostic assessments that help us understand why is this kid not reading at grade level or, or why are they not meeting this benchmark, whatever area it is? It allows us to drill down and understand so we can start down here, reteach, remediate, additional time and support, so that way they can climb that ladder back up. Okay? So that's diagnostic. David talked about formative. It's informing of, informing us while we are, are teaching, while students are learning, so we can make that adjustment in real time and not wait for the final test or the final exam or the final project. Quizzes fall under formative, projects, a quick check. David said thumbs up, thumbs down. That's formative. The last one is summative. It informs us after the learning has taken place. So MCAs, that's a summative, and that's really measuring comprehensively the, the school year, right? At grade level benchmark. A unit test is also summative data, summative information. What does the student know after the unit is done? Okay? So that just gives an overview. And like I said, the best evidence of learning is grabbing and pulling from multiple. So when we think about where do we want to put all of our eggs? Do we want to put it all in one of those assessment tools? I hope not, because we know our students are more than one assessment tool, right? And we'll, we'll talk about that here shortly. But I wanted to lay that foundation for you because when you hear in World's Best Workforce and we start setting goals, some of the goals go back to MCAs, some of them go back to Fastbridge data and things like that. And so when we understand the purpose of that assessment tool, I think that's going to help us make some, some good goals and some good decisions when we monitor and adjust our practices.
So the next couple of slides will be some longitudinal data for MCAs, and I'll walk through a couple of examples, and then you'll be able to look at all the colors and follow those, but I'll explain what that looks like. And then later on, we'll talk about some of the, the caveats that kind of go into testing and where we are and where we want to go as a district. So for example, if you look at, let's, let's look at grade seven. So grade seven is 2022, 23, grade seven is the dark blue. So our, our district, as a district, 35.5% proficiency, the state average is 45.2. If you go back to when these seventh graders were sixth graders, the proficiency was 35.6 and the state average was 54.4. What do you notice on that? What sticks out on that?
So where's COVID fall in, in there?
Not, it won't fall into this yet.
Not yet.
It will fall into, into this area. So what, what we're looking at is where we are, where these students were as sixth graders at 35.6. What was the state average that year? 54.4. So what we're looking at is where we are, where these students were as sixth graders at 35.6. What was the state average that year? 54.4. Last spring, when we took the MCAs for reading, we were at 35.5. State average dropped 9.2 percentage points. So in essence, we closed, in that year, we closed the gap between our scores and the state average by about 9%. And that, that's what we're looking for. There are, there are going to be other times, if you look at grade eight, so these students are current ninth graders, okay? The proficiency percentage in reading is 17.2. The previous year, 19.7. You'll notice that there is a steady drop these three years in the state average. But there's also a lot of caveats that go into when we're looking at all of these scores. The state averages, there'll be years where you'll see a drop, a big drop in the state average. And that could be a number of things. Could be that the, it could be a different company is providing that assessment. It could be that it went from paper pencil to computerized. Then it went from multiple choice to all these different dropdowns and different things that you needed to do. So there's a lot of things that go into that. So we want to know why our students are achieving 19.7 and 17.2 in proficiency for two years in a row. We have some ideas, but the blessing that we have here is that we, we're a school district that we know our students and we understand, we understand some of the things that go into whether they're successful or whether they're not. This eighth grade, eighth grade class last spring, there were a number of students who finished the test, the reading within, I believe it was 11 minutes or nine minutes. And it's a test that should take hour, hour and a half, something like that. So we had a group of students and we found that out by accident. And so those are, those are going to affect our percentages. And when you have a class that is, if a class has, you know, 68 students in it, one student represents about a one and a half percentage point. So there's a big swing in there. And so that is, so we look at that and we know at the high school that we need to make some changes in the environment in which we are, we're providing our students for these exams. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But the other thing that goes into some of this data as we, as we look at, you know, probably around 2017, 18, is the ability for student, or for families to opt out of testing. And that, the state requires us to provide that somewhere in writing or on our website and letting parents know that they have an option to opt out. That number varies by district. It has increased over the years for us. Last, last spring, district wide, we had 27 individual students who opted out of testing. Of those, those 27 students represented 50 tests. Because if a student, there are students that opted out in math and reading, or just math, or you know, one of the, or science. 24 of those students were in reading, 14 were in math and 11 were in science. So of those 50 tests, they are automatic, does not meet the standards. So we start with basically a whole, you know, a classroom of students who we have no chance, because they opted out of the exam. It becomes a, did not, did not meet. So there's a lot of things that go into it. But you've probably seen this graph before, if you've been on the board a while. This is something that Don Canol had created and we just had updated. And so each, each color represents what, the grade level and that same group of students. And if you look at in 2018, 19 is when we had COVID. And then 1920, they did not have the assessments. Let's go to the next one.
In addition, one of those other caveats is MDE has a cycle for updating and changing academic standards. And so oftentimes, those standards at each grade level change. And then the MCA will also change. So we're not exactly comparing apples to apples in assessments each year when those standards change. So if that makes sense, for example, science standards just changed. So we're going to see that come out in future MCA assessments. So then to compare year to year, it isn't a true longitudinal look at that. Sorry if you were going to jump on that. So math is coming up, sorry, ELA is coming up. So we're going to see these tweaks in data across the state, right? Here locally, but also statewide.
And science with the change in the science standards, it changes licensure. And so we've had, in the last year, two years, we've had, some of our middle school, they've done a switch because of life science moving to a different grade level. And so the teachers are teaching a new subject in that area. So there's, that's part of that, part of that issue.
So David, it's at the state level that they say they can opt out. It has nothing to do with our district. It's the state that's saying that.
Yeah. So there's a forum that, that families, there's, we have a link to it on our, on our website.
And so we have to go to the state level to kind of complain at that. Because when did they start that? I mean, I just, I think it's stupid, because it's just another, something for somebody to get out of. It's not our control, I guess.
Yeah, and there, it's been there. It's just that in recent years, we've been required to put it out there that, that is a, that is a choice that they can make. And it depends on the school district. It depends on the year. You know, when, there are schools that have, you know, a really, really high opt-out rate. And it makes their data, you know, it's not reliable.
I'm just trying to grasp as to why they would encourage them to opt out. I mean, I just, I think it should be a requirement. But once again, you can bring a horse to water, but you can't make a drink.
Yeah, and you know, so some of the reasons that families have given last spring was, you know, don't believe in standardized testing, not the best tool to evaluate my child's academic progress, parent choice, test anxiety. And I think with, with, with mental health, you know, anxiety and things like that are coming into play. I think we'll only see, continue to see more families that are opting out.
Some students with IEPs fit into your data? Take the same test?
No. For the,
Some?
They changed that, they changed that a few years also, ago also. But we have, we have some students that take a totally different test that aren't factored into that. But they try to be as inclusive as they can.
But does that affect your data negatively?
Yeah, if they're, if they're taking, if they're receiving special ed services and they're taking the MCAs, absolutely. Depending on how they do. So this is the math longitudinal data and it follows the same, the same pattern. So you can see that if you follow the color all the way through and then go back to 2012, 13. One thing you'll notice is when you keep an eye on the state average and you'll see some significant decreases in there. If you look at, you know, it's starting out here in 2017, 18, and the average is dropping each year. And that will reflect our, that'll reflect our scores. So that you can look at, it's, if you have any questions, let me know. Or Jesse is our, Mr. Rasmussen is our new DAC and assessment coordinator. And we can pull some more data for you too, but it's just really just for your reference.
Can we get a copy of this?
Yeah.
Send it to us.
Yeah, sure.
I have a hard time reading some of that. I got glasses.
Yeah, and this is, this is the same, so this, the 22, 23 information is added. This is the same information that was in the state of the district. So, but yes, we can send it with this updated information and then you can, yep, and it'll also be uploaded onto the document. We just, I wanted them to present, walk through it all, but yes, absolutely, it'll be available for everybody.
My impression over the years was when you were talking about how they changed the tests, some of that. Whenever we would start to score really well, along with the other schools, they'd change the test and we'd all drop into the, and then we'd start over again. And it's like, hmm, how can that be?
The other question I would have is, I assume the state determines proficiency, but that can vary from year to year. But what's proficient last year may be different this year.
Yes, and that formula, I don't, there's probably one person in the whole state who understands that whole formula. It's really difficult. But yeah, that definitely, that definitely changes. And you'll notice, you know, it, it kind of depends on where the state is in, you know, read well by third grade. Years ago, it was no child left behind. And then before that was the profiles of learning. And so when there's a, something out there that, that somebody puts out to make sure everybody is reading at grade level or is proficient, it comes with different, different standards. And then those standards are adjusted based on how it's going. I mean, it's really a moving target when it comes to that.
Do you want the next one?
Yes.
So the next, these graphs are coming from the Minnesota Report Card website, which is public. Everybody has access to that. So on our late start, the elementary staff spent some time looking at our elementary data. And so this first one is showing math, reading and science at the elementary level. Grades three, four, five take reading and math. And then grade five takes the science at the elementary. Okay, so you can see just, you know, year to year. You can see 1920, there's no marks there because of COVID. But you can see just kind of where things were at in the last few years. And then on the next slide shows,
I'm waiting for Rick to look.
Oh, that's fine, you go ahead.
Okay. I want some privacy. Perfect. The next slide is just comparing to the state. In, in math on the left and the elementary school is that teal color. The state is the darker blue color and then us as a district. So we've got math on the left, reading on the right. And then, I think you went back. Did you go back? And then science, perfect. And then science comparative to the state for grades, grade five.
Okay, and then slide 12, 13 and 14 gives the same data as the previous slides for the high school. And the first one is for math, reading and science, where we are as a district. And then the next two slides break that down also. And you can see where our, our scores have been, could be better the last couple of years, based on, based on what this is telling us.
But improving.
Well, yeah, we're always looking to improve and we're always looking at different, different ways to reach that level. And there are a lot of nuances to it, but we have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, what year is that where we had that low dip? But 20, and that's like 20, what?
2021.
Okay, so that's coming out of COVID, because I see, okay, so 20, okay. And now, as Bruce has pointed out, we are starting.
That might have been the year, that might have been the year that we were hybrid most of the year, maybe.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
So again, when we look at the summative data, it's one piece, right, to our, to our story. And so next, we're going to transition to another piece that provides more local data. Like I said, this one is, Minnesota Report Card is public for everybody. And, which is, you know, great and accessible. But that next piece is going to be looking at our screener that we use through Fastbridge. And David mentioned the Read Well by Third Grade. Minnesota has shifted to the READ Act, this past legislation, where all students K through three are required to be screened during the first six weeks of school and the last six weeks of school. So that way we can provide interventions in a timely manner and respond to our data. And so thankfully, this was our practice already, so it wasn't a change for us. Also thankfully, MDE put out an approved screener assessment tool list. Thankfully, Fastbridge was on that, so there too, we did not have to shift our practices or the tool that we were using. So that was always a positive. So we've got the READ Act and that's driving our Fastbridge data at our local level. And so I'm going to turn it over to Marie and Maria to talk about Fastbridge.
All right, so, speaking of a little bit of discrimination with data as well. So this is what our graphs look like district-wide and school-wide for our Fastbridge screeners. Kindergarten and first grade are their own breed per se, because they have, so for example, in kindergarten, in the fall, winter and spring, they take eight one-to-one assessments. So they sit with either myself or one of the MTSS members or a trained para to do that intervention. And they do every single student in that grade level, right? So for example, in kindergarten and first grade, I do the reading component of it, the one-to-one assessments. This data looks at early reading, which includes letter names, letter sounds, nonsense words and phoneme segmentation. And the star is where we are this fall, okay? So this is kindergarten, this is first grade. This is where our kindergartners and our first graders came in this fall. Now, when I go back a dated point here, that is, this, this is, it's representing the first grade data. This would be our second graders' kind of exiting performance percentage. So our second graders this year, 57% of them met benchmark, 43% of them did not. Our third graders this year ended their first grade year, 43% proficient, 57% not proficient, meaning they didn't hit that, that moving target, that number that science and reading says that that's where our students should be at, at that age level. And then this last 47% would be the, hold on, first, second, third, our, this year's fourth graders, end of the year at 47%. In kindergarten, same thing. This year's kindergartners, first graders, second graders, third graders. Now, as you can see, there's a really big dip this year for our students that took that assessment. That was the year I got removed from MTSS and got moved into a first grade teaching position. So the consistency given with the assessment was not the same as it had been previous years. That's not to say it was given incorrectly or correctly. It just, that was a really big, that was a really big difference that year when it came to that, when it came to that data. So you can go to the next one. When we're talking about second through fifth grade, we are giving two main assessments for reading. We're checking their fluency, which is how many words they can read correctly in one minute. And we're also doing what's called a reading, which is a comprehension assessment. It really covers the five pillars of reading, which include phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension as a whole. So this is looking at our A-reading da- data. And we have some really amazing skills going on in our, in our district. The stars again are our scores coming in, in the fall. So in second grade for comprehension, 62% of our students met that benchmark where they should be in the fall of, um, in the fall of second grade. Seventy-two percent in third grade, eighty-three percent in fourth grade and 71% in fifth grade. When you look at this, I'm looking at, hey, they came, my fifth graders came in at 71%. Last year, they left fourth grade at 59% proficiency. So they actually went up over the summer, which is very abnormal, but really, really cool. It could have, but then again, it could have been an amazing testing day. Sometimes that data is subjective that way, right? Um, if I look here, our fourth graders came in at 83%. They left third grade at 80% proficiency. That's, that's usually around the norm, within five percentage points, 10 percentage points. And you can see the pattern as it goes down. Um, that's all I have on that one, I think. This one is still second through fifth grade, but now we're looking at that fluency assessment. That's how well our students are able to read, how many words per minute correctly. Um, second grade came in at 51%, third 65%, fourth 67% and fifth grade 55%. But if I look at the correlating data points, as in came in at 55, they left at 56%. They only dropped one percentage point of meeting benchmark this year. That's pretty amazing. If I look at, um, if I look at our fourth graders from last year, 67% met in the fall, 79% met last spring, which, yeah, that's about a 12 percentage difference. It's, it's still not bad, we're not, we're not tanking. So looking at that data too is really helpful with making sure that we're implementing the strategies and the resources that we utilize in tier one, two and three instruction. You can move to the next one. That was all reading. Now we're into math and it's, it's a lot of the same data. Um, this is this year's kindergartners, last year's kindergartners, so first graders, second graders and third graders on how they ended and began the year. I will say the kindergarten class that came in this year, uh, with reading being at about 68% proficiency and math being at 78% proficiency, that's, I, we have not seen that in the years that I've been here. So that's been pretty exciting, pretty amazing to see that happen. You can go on to the next one. A-math is a summative assessment. It assesses all that, those components of math. It could be asking, tell me what this shape is, is it a circle, square, rectangle? To, what would you put as a mixed fraction for 32 fourteenths? Okay, it can be all sorts of variables. This assessment also is based on what the student is able to do, so it's acclimated, right? It, um, if a student gets a question wrong, the computer system makes the question slightly easier. If they get it correct, they make it slightly harder, so it's adapted towards the student. Um, but again, if you're looking at the percentages, they're, they're within a nice range for, um, being able to grow and being able to, to keep that, uh, core foundational knowledge and be able to keep building on it as years progress. That's you.
All right, so now we have the middle school and middle school of sixth through eighth. Um, in the past, we have done A-reading and A-math and our CBMR, which is the fluency. And this year we started ninth and 10th grade as well. And so they just have their own little itty-bitties there because we don't have longitudinal data for them. Um, so we have sixth, seventh and eighth grade. This is A-reading adjustable again, if they get the question wrong, it gets easier. If they get the question right, it gets more challenging for them, so it finds their level. Um, and you can look at like this year's ninth grade class, was this in eighth grade spring? Was this in seventh grade spring and so on? So it takes a second to figure out what you're looking at. The stars again are this fall, what we're getting, where our kids are coming in at. And the rest of these are all spring data points. Go ahead to the next one, and then this is fluency. Again, we just do this with sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Um, when we do our CBMR, it's three reads with, at a grade level, um, with each student. And so Mr. Campbell and myself go through sixth, seventh and eighth grade and do all of those. And we try to get those done fairly quickly. And then when we said we were going to do ninth grade and 10th grade too, it was a little daunting to try to figure out how we were going to get the manpower to also look at fluency for ninth and 10th. So this year, we were excited to be able to do A-reading and A-math. And then in the future, we'll look into CBMR as well. So you can go to the next one, and then this is A-math, um, for each of our grades as well. And overall, our math scores have been pretty consistent, which is really nice to be able to see over the years how that has been. You can go to the next.
So this data is looking at our students, are they meeting the benchmark or not? There's other data that can show growth, how many of our students are growing, uh, to their projected, um, growth line, if you will. So we decided for tonight, we'll just stick with proficiency, meeting that benchmark. So as I mentioned, a lot of data at our fingertips, right? What do we do with it? How do we respond? And so that goes back to this. And so when we look at our students who are not meeting that benchmark, what can we put in place for additional support? And so that is the work of our MTSS team, that is the work of our classroom teachers, um, providing additional time and support during power half hour, during connect time, during advisory, those, those special allocated times scheduled throughout the day. And then on the other side, extending and enriching for students who are, who are exceeding those benchmarks. Um, one thing to note about the proficiency is it is a moving target. So in the fall, um, you might, the goal might be to read 63 words correct in a minute. It might jump to 80, might jump to 100 by the end of the school year. So we're really looking at that growth across the school year and not just meeting 63 at some point, um, throughout. So it's all about how we respond and, and how we look at data at grade level teams, leadership teams as a district, um, and make decisions based on, on, uh, data points here.
Can I ask a question about the benchmark? So this is FastBridge.
Yes.
How's that determined? Who has determined the benchmark?
So FastBridge is normed nationally. So peers, um, in fourth grade, in the fall, they, again, calculations, norm it and then that's how that is decided.
So FastBridge is sold all over the country? And so 100% of schools?
I don't think all.
Not everybody uses FastBridge.
But it's, no, the data we have is a data set across the whole country, not just the state of Minnesota.
So do they change the benchmark?
Yes, yes.
MCA, so you could have, this could look pretty good and then they change the benchmark and throw it off a little bit.
And it's based on how students are doing, um, similar peers across, right, across the nation. So if everybody moves up, then that benchmark is going to move up, right? So it's adjusting and tweaking. And FastBridge actually originated in Minnesota, it's from the U of A. Um, so it got sold to a California company. Um, but it did originate here, so if, um, when it comes to standards, it, because Minnesota's education standards are higher than a lot of states in the United States, it's going to correlate better with our standards, if that makes sense.
So we looked at the MCA's over a number of years, right? Now we're looking at FastBridge over just a few years. So the narrower the window would look better than the larger the window if they're changing your parameters all the time. There, see, that's part I don't really get, um, with, and I don't get it with the MCA is why they're changing that all the time. Because in our position where you're trying to figure this out, you don't have a baseline. And without the description of the baseline changing, it can make us look really bad when everything is going fine. I mean, next one, they look really good.
Yep, and, and I think the one piece though is like the score is always the same, right? The score is always the same to demonstrate, you have to meet the, the same score to demonstrate proficiency and, and of those standards. But what changes is, um, as the standards are revised, they're going to revise the assessment to reflect the standards, okay? As the population changes, you've got a different group of kids who are taking that same, um, this, they're not changing it per, um, they're not, they're not necessarily resetting the score just because everybody's doing really well. What they're taking a look at is, is the assessment aligned with, um, the standards of, here's what all, what kids need to know to say that we, we can confidently say they have to score this, this score to be proficient on these standards. Um, as the standards change and as the grade level changes, it's different data and it's different information. But they're not necessarily looking at that group of kids and saying, okay, well, that group of kids did really well, now let's up the ante. Does that make sense? Am I explaining that adequately? I mean, I think, because I, I hear what you're saying, Bruce, but this, there, the, our MCA data, there are variables and there are things that we absolutely, to David's point, like caveats, right? Like you have to pay attention to, this time it went from a paper test to a, um, a computer test. That's going to impact the scores. It didn't necessarily mean that they changed the test per se, they changed the way in which they gave it.
So do you know what the changes are? Or does it just come up every year?
So each year we have to, so with FastBridge, we have to check what is the benchmark this year?
Yes.
Did it increase by a couple of words per minute? Did it decrease by a couple of words per minute? Did it stay the same? I would need to dig a little bit deeper to find out how and why and when that has exactly changed. Um, it is in FastBridge and I can do some research and circle back. Um, the nice thing with FastBridge, it does provide national norms. So yes, we can look at data, how are our Painsville kids compared to their peers here in Painsville? How are they doing outside of Painsville, right? And I think that's an important, another piece of data to look at, to see, what does that look like outside our four walls?
But, and we've had FastBridge for five years now. And this past year was the first time that we've had to reprint all the materials because some grade levels changed. And that change, it wa, it wasn't, it wasn't super substantial, it was a pretty, pretty small change.
So Bruce, that's why we only have it for five years, is because we've, we've only been using it for five years. So now each year, we'll continue to have that information to compare, especially for our kiddos that have come in as kindergarten now. We'll be able to, we'll have it over the course of the number of years, we've only had it for five years.
Prior to this.
Five data points.
Prior to this, uh, we had Ames Web. And Ames Web kind of got, it's still, it's, it still exists, but a lot of districts went away from it and went towards FastBridge, so, and, um, supported research better.
I know it sounds from the simple side, but I've been in sales my whole life. And, um, if all of a sudden, we started to score really high in front of every other school and our teachers are doing all fantastic, they're going to change this to make sure it goes down because they want you to keep buying, because you, you think you're trying to solve a problem. And I don't mean to, it's just reality. So when you get to those changes, unless it is very detailed on what the changes are and you know exactly what the changes are, it ruins some of your analytical data.
It can, and it depends on, you know, who, who's in office at the national level and who is, who is, um, you know, representing MDE at a certain time and.
Yes.
Different philosophies and, and, and that even goes into, uh, different philosophies of administration when it comes to MCA's and FastBridge, which we'll touch on.
And, and let's remember, these, these, these scores, these things that we collect, they are from humans, our, our children. And our children are not status quo every day. They don't come into school the exact same every day. They, their brains don't operate the same way every day. There's tons of brain research showing about how even, uh, even little human brains, as in kindergartners, preschoolers, they're shaped differently. Their different components of their brain are reacting differently than even kiddos who are in their teenage years. Not in a traditional way, like as in hormones and growth and that way. But when those teenagers were at that, that, that kindergarten age, their brains were shaped different and they worked differently just because of the world that they're brought in. So you, you have that component in there too, that, that's, these are kiddos and they, um, they change every single day. So it's, it's almost like you're, you're doing a moving target anyway, with that as well.
So going back to how we respond and how do we use this data? Um, just a quick snapshot of how MTSS, um, time, people and resources, um, are allocated at the elementary level and secondary. Um, so Marie and Maria will, this is their jam, this is what they do.
So at the beginning of the year, we start out with setting up schedules. We get all of that benchmarking data done, right? We get the screener done with all of our kindergarten through now 10th grade students, which is pretty amazing. We get that done in about a two-week period. We sit down as an MTSS team and we enter in all the data into spreadsheets. It's a lot of data, it takes a lot of time, but it's really interesting to see where students lie and what are the percentages and also even just comparing it to last year. So we take all that data, we figure out, okay, who are the students that are exceeding? Because those are, those are some liars that you can, um, say, yep, they need some enrichment, so let's make sure we do that. For the students who, uh, who are struggling with material, then this is Jacobi, Ms. Rassason and myself, uh, utilized letters, uh, reading survey, which is a diagnostic assessment to really pinpoint, what is that reading skill that they're struggling with? Is it, is it all the way back to letter names? Is it CBC words, those cat, bat, hat words? Or is it actually, um, the difference between real words and nonsense words? The state's, the state's fundamental assessor for, um, dyslexia screening is nonsense words. Research has shown, if you're not able to blend nonsense words, that can be a sign of dyslexia, can be. Not is, not is, is, as in everything, but it can be a red flag. So we're making sure that we're utilizing our data and collecting our data in that way. That also helps us pinpoint the instruction when we make our groups during our power half hour to be very targeted so the students are getting exactly what they need for that period of time. It also brings back letters. So letters has been a framework that we brought into our district. This is year number three of training for staff who have been here for three years. And it has been an intense journey, uh, for our teachers and they've done a phenomenal job with it. Huge kudos to all the teachers that participated in it because it was a lot of work. It was a lot of research and it was, it was very heavy when it came to material. But I would say almost every single teacher has said, I'm really glad that we've gone through it because now I can do better, right? So that focuses on the five pillars of literacy, which you can read, um, up there, phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, and then what are the best strategies and what's the best framework to be able to instruct that to get, um, to get your students to be successful. In our world at the elementary, we first really focused on phonological awareness. That's the ability to hear something and be able to produce it. So for example, if I were to say, tell me the sounds that you hear in cat, my students would go, cat. Okay, and it goes all the way to multi-syllabic words, being able to pound out the syllables, touch all the sounds. That's the first step in reading. They have to be able to hear it, to be able to say it, before they can read it, before they can write it, okay? Um, that was the first thing that we focused on, which we brought in Haggerty, which is a program that helps with that phonological awareness and really targets that. Um, and then we also utilize letters research, as I said before, they have research-based. They have research-based strategies within our training that we've been implementing. Other departments are trying to connect that vocabulary instruction with some of the letters strategies, as in if, if in math you're learning about polygon, polygons, right? Pounding out the syllables, what do each of those chunks mean? And figuring out the meaning of the word that way. The ultimate goal of the instruction is that we want our students, the graphs that we had before, we want 80% of the students to be responding positively to meet benchmark in that, in that component. If there is not 80% success rate, that's when we really need to think, okay, tier one instruction. What do we need to do as a whole class? What is that skill that students need help with as a whole class to be able to move forward? Because logistically, if you remember that triangle, core is everybody. Tier two should be only about 10, maybe 15% of your population. And then your tier three, that gets that really intense one-to-one on top of the half hour tier two time, on top of the tier one time. That should only be five to 10%. And that's kind of a mix of students between our MTSS students who have some tier three interventions and then our students who participate in special education.
You mentioned 80%, now is that across the board for, for everything as far as reading, writing?
The 80% is kind of that standard go-to number. If, if your students have met, if 80% of your students are meeting that goal, your tier one intervention or your tier one instruction, classroom instruction is considered successful. Because as we know, we're all humans, right? We don't all learn the same way. Therefore, that 20% is those, are those kids that might be more explicit or a different. So what does it look like? At the elementary school, the big research push is that when you implement interventions right away, starting in kindergarten, you will have a much higher success rate by middle school. You will not need as many MTSS components in middle school if we're getting our students early in the game to close that gap that David was talking about. So our MTSS staff at the elementary school is much larger than the secondary school for that reason. So we have Mrs. Rassason, she pushes in and pulls out for reading power half hour and any tier three instruction we may need on B days only because she's busy at the secondary building, which kudos to her for transitioning like that. It takes a lot. She is at the secondary on A days to instruct 7th grade ELA. We have been so fortunate to have a volunteer that comes four days a week. She team teaches with Mrs. Rassason, Ms. Kathy is her name. She team teaches with Mrs. Rassason on. Let's see here.
B days.
B days. And then Mrs. Rassason gives her lesson plans to do the A days so that we are implementing an intervention for at least four days a week because that is what research says is best for students. You have myself, I'm full-time over at the elementary for reading power half hour, tier three reading instruction, one-to-one or two-to-one. Mrs. Jacoby is our new addition this year coming from the classroom. She is also doing push-in and pull-out for reading power half hour and then some tier two social skills and behavior instruction. Because we can't forget that component, right? That's a very important core value. We have Ms. Karna, she works via AmeriCorps. She's our reading core tutor. She works with students one-to-one or two-to-one doing scripted interventions that she is trained to do by AmeriCorps. She comes four days a week and does an amazing job with that. And then we also had a new addition or we have Grandma Anita, who is via again AmeriCorps, but through the foster grandparent program. So she's able to work with kindergartners in a small group level setting led by the teachers' instruction. So qualify for extra support as an MTSS support. On those assessments, we, they would score below the 20th percentile on FastBridge assessments. That usually ends up being about the students that are in the bottom 10 to 12 students in the grade. And our goal is to, our goal is to bring up student scores and we discuss these students and write reports on them monthly when we meet as grade levels at the elementary.
What does it look like at the secondary? All of our staff at the secondary, if they haven't participated in formal letters training, the entire ELA staff has. We have some social studies and science staff who have participated in that as well. If they haven't participated in the formal letters training, we have pulled them in last year and now this year into a secondary letters training for vocabulary and comprehension here. So it specifically is targeting secondary students and what, how they learn the best. So we, all of this, all of the teachers here are. Yes, so we, all of the teachers have been working on that, all the departments, explicit vocabulary instruction. We have been working our tails off the past couple of years and making sure we are working with students. Again, 80% of what I teach in the classroom, if I have a lesson and 80% of my kids get it, that's awesome. Let's move on. And then the other 20%, I pull back and I say, okay, I'm going to do a reteach and whoever wants to come back here, and they know. And they come back and then we re-discuss and talk about whatever. So. Moving on. Sorry. No, that's okay. So actually, can you go back?
Yes.
The point of this slide is to say that our staff works exceptionally hard to make sure that our core instruction is really, really strong. And when we are struggling with something, we have very good communication and we reach out and talk to each other. How can I do this better? And we support each other and we have a phenomenal secondary staff. Okay, keep going. MTSS at the secondary has shifted and changed over the years. Every year it seems like there's something a little bit different. This year with staffing and with the schedule the way it is, we have Mr. Campbell, who is going to be pushing in for reading and math and social studies this quarter. He's only doing that on A days because he teaches on B days. So he and A days will be going into those classrooms. And then Mr. Spanier is pushing for math in sixth and seventh grade during second and fourth quarter. And he teaches eighth grade. Eighth grade English. Eighth grade math. And so we're fortunate to have whatever MTSS staff actually be teaching the eighth grade math. And so he has a para in there and is able to make it around during that huge chunk of time. He is a huge proponent for the black schedule because in math, it helps to be able to teach it and then gets around to every student to be able to help them when they have that large amount of time. So those are our two MTSS staff who are doing supports at the secondary. My role at the secondary is more so with benchmarking and the testing calendar with that. So students who qualify for support if they're below the 30th percentile, we sit down, look at all of the kiddos. If they are receiving special ed services, we pull those names out. And then we look at just the students who fall below that area, who are not receiving those services. And then we help out with those kids. We also look at students who are failing in a class. Students will seek support. I have high schoolers coming in constantly during the bulldog time or before, after school, asking for help with I X Ls, with the writing, English papers, with whatever. As well as students brought up at grade levels and I will add in their parents. I have parents reach out, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Spanier, parents reach out and we absolutely pull those kiddos in and support with them as well.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. So Cassie mentioned before that all of, all of the stuff that with MCAs is available on the school report card. There is so much data in there and so many comparisons. And you can look at neighboring school districts, you can look at just, it's endless. So I just brought up a couple, a couple of slides I just want to show you. Can you just go to slide 12 just real quickly?
Yeah.
Okay, so this graph is in the school report card and it shows, it shows where we are for 2023. We, you know, I've been here a long time and there's always comparisons between school districts. I will say, and this is all on, on the school report card. If you look at a district similar to our size to the east of us and a district similar to the size, the west of us, we, where we are and where we struggled, we fall, we fall in the middle, closer to the higher end of the three schools. But it's just to give you a little perspective on it. So you can, and if you could go back to 29. So part of that data, it's more than just the MCAs. It's, it's what our kids are taking and what they're doing. So they have a, part of that report card is a, is a slide called rigorous course taking. And it might, it's probably a little hard to see. But so statewide, and this was, this is for the graduating class of 2021. So this is the newest data they have. So it's a snapshot of a, of a school year. Statewide, for that class, 60,000 students graduated. And P S E O, which is the college courses that they take with a college professor. Statewide, 10% of those, of all graduates that year participated in P S E O. And 32% of all graduates that year participated in concurrent classes, which are classes taught by our high school teachers through a college like Fond du Lac or St. Cloud Technical College, things like that. So 10%. As a school district, Painesville, 49% of our students in that graduating class participated in some type of P S E O classes. That's impressive. And then, and concurrent classes, which we are very fortunate to offer a lot, a lot. 74% of that grade took part in getting college credit through our concurrent classes that year. It's very impressive, especially when you compare it to districts that are neighboring us. What you see is what is, especially with the concurrent, is what we offer compared to what other, what other schools offer in our area. Just another example of looking at data differently. And then the last slide is also for the graduating class of 2021. And what this is, it's the total number of students earning a regular high school diploma and who enrolled in an institute of higher learning. So any type of post-secondary within 16 months of graduation. So they may have taken a semester off and started in the winter. Statewide, 67% of students that graduating class participated in or attended Institute of Higher Learning. Painesville that year, 67%, so right on, right on target. The data for neighboring districts is we, we do very well. We do very well. And I just wanted to make sure that sometimes we look at the data for kids that are in school and going through school. But then what, what are they taking and what are they doing after high school? And I think that's important to see also.
So we're going to wrap this up and come back to our mission. What is our purpose? What is our intent? And that is to prepare our students, right? Academics, personal skills and social skills as well. And so when we talk data, we're looking at the whole gamut, looking at as kids, our kids. With education, we always monitor and adjust, right? And we're always continuous improvement. And that's what we're, we're called to do as, as educators. And we appreciate your support in our decision-making and bringing those hard questions to the table. Because it's important to have stakeholder voices, right? And, and perspectives. So with that, we are going to, speaking of continuous improvement, tech levy next. We are.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
So irrespective of, of the Minnesota average, have either of you set goals that for the reading, the writing, or those core classes, that for a year, next year, we want to, want to increase whatever that learning is by 1% or 2%? Is that something?
That's actually world's best workforce.
Okay.
And our grade level goals that be connected with on our two-hour light start, we made some grade level goals. What does that look like?
Okay.
Where are we at? Where do we want to be? But world's best workforce is really where that goal setting comes in that you'll be a part of.
All right. Very good. One other thing too, just not tonight, but we're talking about how you measured academics. But we also have social and personal skills. Sometimes it'd be interesting, how do we measure those two items as well?
I'm happy to chat about that. Right, David? That'll be another.
Another two hours. That's fine.
Which is good, but yeah, I mean, it's, they're, they're measuring that too. So that's awesome.
Thank you.
So now we'll move into the capital bond tech levy. So what I have done is, is my intention here is to kind of continue to build, you know, and keep our historical conversation. So I am going to just skip forward into, in the, in the presentation. To. I believe it starts on page 10. So now here's where we're really going to, again, tonight, the intention is to look at the background of what it is that we have been using the tech levy for. And then finally, at our next meeting, we'll take a look at how it would be expected to be used in the future. Okay? So the current uses of our technology coordinator, our technology director, those are all supported through our tech levy. So in 2015 to 2020, that position was contracted, it was contracted time from New London Spicer. Jonah has been our person for a number of years, but his, his employment was different and, and it changed over the course of the 10 years. 20, in 2020 to 2022, we had a direct hire of him. So you did, you, we did have some increased costs, but there was also shared services with Belgrade, Grutnel, Rosa. So there was some buyback of that time. But when you think about the rest of the services that we're going to be talking about in the infrastructure and the, when Jim was talking a little bit about the switches, the, the fibers, the cabling, all of the, the, I kind of like call it the skeleton of our district so that you can put the meat on something. That's all the work that he did over the course of this 10 years. Okay? In 23, 24, we have restructured that position. So again, with Jonah's departure, we did a tech director. Finding a tech director is a difficult find as I'm looking over at Jim and I'm super grateful to have his support. But finding and hiring a, a full-time tech director proves to be very difficult. So we did look at restructuring that differently and we have their two tech assistants. So they're more hands-on doing the immediate support in the district, in each building. Our tech integrationist, I think he's on our next slide, is also part of that team. But our coordinator-director position has been restructured to try to maximize our support with a contracted service. We also hired a technology integrationist. So some of you may remember Garrett, Garrick, Grace. Garrick was the original tech integrationist who was hired. And then when he moved on, Colin Wolf came on board. So a big, one of the big components that's also come with this is integrating the technology that we have into our classroom instruction. And that's using a certified teacher who knows and breathes classroom instruction and how to bring that into the classroom. So then let's talk about the technology itself. One-to-one devices have been purchased. So in 2015 to 2018, the district transitions to one-to-one devices. I thought it was really interesting to learn that prior to that, the district had to take out loans to redo the, when you had to redo. the district had to take out loans to redo the, when you had to redo a computer lab. So you would take out the loan, you renew the lab and then you have to pay it off. So as we've transitioned to one-to-one devices, again, that becomes part of the really important, critical component of having a tech integrationist. So how are the students and the staff integrating that technology and not just giving a kid a computer and saying, here you go, do your worksheet on the computer? That is not the existence of our Haynesville area students. And I think that's an amazing, that's that's amazing. You will see that beginning in 2018, there's an approximate $60,000 annually that's set aside for one-to-one replacements. So we have a cycle that determines when a set of devices are retired and brought in new. You can't do all of that at once. So it really is strategic in the timing of when that placement replacement happens. And that's some of the work that took place over the course of that 10 years leading up to today. Software. So you will see at this slide was taken from, again, this was part of our state of the district. Colin said to me when he reviewed this, he said, Janelle, we're up to closure to 100. Okay? Our technology, software and integration between systems just continues to grow. One of the things I think that is important to to acknowledge and recognize is that we've worked really hard to, maybe we'll give something a trial. We try not to have where Jim shared over $100,000 of software. We are spreading that across multiple funding sources. So not all of that is coming out of out of the tech levy, but it speaks to the the depth of the software involvement that we have within our district.
Do we analyze when the software is not used to get it out of here?
Yes, we certainly do. Sometimes that's that's a hard decision because you might have one or two people who really like something, but then a vast majority don't. And so it becomes what's the cost benefit analysis, right? And so that absolutely is part of the discussion for sure. When it comes to software, one of the things that we've noticed is that it has evolved over the course of years. And this is not, I would say, Bruce, this is going to feed right into your salesman type of thought process because they give it to you free and they you you find out how much you love it and how much you can do with it. And then we want to purchase it, right? But I would say that one of the things that has happened with that is that the district, because of the tech levy, has had the opportunity to purchase things on a long-term commitment, which brings the cost down pretty substantially. So then we're also able to spread out those subscriptions over the course of two, three, five years. Okay? And I don't mean that in a negative way because it is, I mean, it's just good business, to be honest.
It's reality.
It's reality. And then our infrastructure, as Jim was talking about, some of the things that we we will map out for you at our next meeting is our our kind of projected plan of how we will have to maintain the infrastructure. We've got to keep our skeleton in place so that all of the systems we have can maintain functionality. And I think that it's, again, the work that's been done over the past 10 years has really provided the foundation for where we sit. And I think those are just critical from network closets to, I'm going to, don't laugh at me when I use the terms inappropriately because that's really why I could look to you. But whether it's the access points so that we can have people working on their laptops, on their Chromebooks, in their iPads at the elementary, sitting in a hallway, sitting in, I mean, our students are working everywhere and they're they're not bound to a board and a desk and they're working throughout the building. All of that comes from the infrastructure that has come through the tech levy. Okay? So again, this has been over the course of 10 years. It's an ongoing stream of funding, so it's not a one-shot money. And I think that that's something that our tech department did really well, was to strategically map out when things needed to be purchased so that we could have incremental purchases and not not just big one, one-time expenditures that now are all going to find find themselves ballooned at one spot to replace. So really, our next steps, as we kind of think about this, is to review how we would use it in the future. That's one of the things that Jim talked about working on for us. I also, we've talked a little bit about different funding sources for our PA system. We've talked about different ways that we can, that's a big priority. So what are some of the eligible uses? How could that fit into, right? Those are all some of the things that we're going to be taking a look at as we come into the next meeting and let's kind of lay out over the course of the next 10 years, here are the things that we would like to use these funds to maintain and sustain. Okay? The other thing, school perception survey and others discussion for November. Really, school perceptions, what their timeline was, is that we would have kind of, I would have their present, their hope for you. And and the timing for them is to have everything all ready to roll. So right after the first of the year, a survey can go to our communities. There was a lot of hesitation in having that happen between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I supported that because I thought, gosh, everybody is busy and it would just get lost in the shuffle. So we're going to talk a little bit about more about that in November. And that really is to engage the community right after the first of the year. So that's kind of where things are at at the moment. So not a lot of new information, but again, just kind of a quick look back in the rearview mirror and what did we do with that funding? And I would, I would say, and I, and again, I'm coming in at the tail end of that tech levy. However, when I look back at it, I I would say it was a very wise use of funds, really strategically over the course of those years. And that's something that I think we need to think about as we move forward. If you want to decide that's the direction we're going to go, we have that conversation about maintaining that fiscal responsibility. So that's the, unless there's additional questions.
I have an additional question. So like when we're in buildings and grounds, we have some of this going on. We are doing the five-year projections, 10-year projections of kind of planning. Will we be able to set something like that up of what we're thinking for this? So when it goes to the customers in the survey, they know what we're thinking.
Yes.
You know, not go out and just ask questions. Follow many times, especially our elderly population who get numbers. And they get all that stuff. How do we make sure they understand really what we're up to? But I think something like that, if we can incorporate that, we'll make the, all the information necessary to intelligently answer our survey questions.
Yep.
And that gives us a huge guidance.
I agree.
As far as what public thinks.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is our strategic plan. So I'm not going to spend an extensive amount of time reviewing each of these pieces, but I really do want to show you the revised format of the strategic plan. Get your feedback and then I'll continue to update. So let me just get to the format change of 1020, 10 of 2023. So really here was the intent was to take all of the, because we've had extensive conversation about how do we track the information from the plans, making sure that everything is is there. So what you're going to see is this document has every goal and action step identified on the tab. And so you'll see, I'm going to just scroll down for just a moment so you can see at the bottom. Oh, I need to, I'm going to just cast this for a second so people, if they log on, can see it as well. Just a second. Okay. So again, in kind of a similar format to what we had on the other tabs, you will see each of the three goals that are just taken from the strategic plan. But then what I did is I wrote each action step that was on the strategic plan alongside the goal that was identified. And then what I did is I maintained the color coding so that you could kind of see, okay, embed seven mindset curriculum, adding character strong. So that's green. There's a little summary of where we're at and what's what's happening. And then the final tab or the final cell says next steps. And really, for that first goal and action item, the next steps are continued implementation. Okay? So again, I'm not going to walk through each of these as much as I wanted to get your feedback is does this help tell the story in a way that you were hoping to see? Okay? So we had a lot of conversation today about data. We had a lot of conversation today about instruction. You're going to see some areas that are on here that are red, where we need to do foundational work in order to meet those goals. One of those areas is professional development promoting learner empowerment. Well, we haven't done a lot of discussion about what does that mean for us, to our staff? So it's really hard to have professional developments around that area. You're also going to see create and implement local emotional and physical wellness standards, activities and evaluation tools. Well, you can't really have evaluation tools if you haven't identified the standards. So those are things that we have some foundational work that we need to do. I would say that the work that that David and Cassie have done within the staff, bringing the focus back to core instruction, standards and aligning the standards that they're teaching to the curriculum and now using data to respond to how are kids doing and what do we need to do when we have that information? All that foundational work is going to be extremely beneficial when we start to tackle some of these health and wellness standards. And I think it becomes much a much smoother process with the effort and the energy that they're putting in to areas that they're very familiar with, within their content. Okay? So you're going to see some narratives in there. There's a couple of spots that we, you know, we've been making notes and the admin team is working on this with me. So there you're going to find some spots where I've got, please add dot, dot, dot. You know, I mean, it's a work in progress, but that's the intent of this document is to track the life of the strategic plan. Any questions or thoughts? Okay.
I like the way you have it written up. So it gives us a little more idea of what's going on rather than just quick notes. It reminds me of our A B C, but what the heck does that stand for? You know, you know what I mean? We do so much of that with the acronyms around here. I like this kind of a format and then we can look at it.
I like you. Well done, Janelle. Good job.
Thank you. I just wanted your feedback to know if, and and we'll continue to add the narratives and then we'll continue to to adjust the the next steps. Okay? So those, that's the strategic plan. The original is still linked into the agenda, so it's there for everybody to see as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to two. Or any other comments?
Opportunity, make comments or questions?
I do have a comment for those that weren't at the gala. Janelle, you did a fabulous job in presenting the school. What was done with the money that was given, how the school has moved forward, use that. So thank you.
You did very nicely.
It was, it was fun. It's fun to highlight the the cool things that are happening around here. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions? And we are done.